Educating, informing, serving. Fact TV, keeping government honest. You're watching a Fact TV presentation of the Town of Rockingham Select Board Meeting.
Hey. It's 6:01. It is November 7th, 2023. We are downstairs in the lower theater. There is a Zoom link that can be accessed through the rockhambf.org website and a phone number if you need to dial in if you can't get contact through the link. So that being said, let's call the meeting to order. The first order of business is to approve the minutes of October 10th, 2023. Let's motion.
I approve the minutes of October 10th, 2023.
Go ahead, second?
I'll second.
It remains seconded to approve the minutes of October 10th, 2023. Any discussion, corrections, deletions, omissions, et cetera, et cetera?
Peter, just one little clarification under the pavement management plan review. It says that I wondered if some roads needed to be repaved. What I actually said was I raised the issue of whether some paved roads could be reverted to gravel.
Right, yeah, I remember you saying that.
Yeah.
Anything else? Any of you here done? All in favor of approving the minutes on October 10th? Would say aye. Aye. All of the polls? Nay? Okay, that being done, let's go to additions to the agenda for routine administrative matters and or pressing matters that will require ratification in a future meeting. I have done, Scott?
No add for tonight, no additions.
Anyone else on board? We will get a fast meet tonight. Public comment on items not on the agenda, three minutes per person. Oh, I see a hand come up. Laurel?
Laurel Green. I live here in Valix Falls. And I just want to start by saying that I'm feeling very appreciative of the Select Board when I saw the article in the paper that mentioned putting attention on to making town meeting, doing a survey to kind of update what we're doing with town meeting. I was really encouraged and feel like the people who voted last town meeting have been heard, so taking action on that. I'm really excited about that. I think it's really important to enliven our town meeting and have found some, a couple of really good resources in our town library. One is All Those in Favor. If you're not familiar with it, check it out. And also just, I think this is an old version, but from the Secretary of State's Office, A Citizen's Guide to Vermont's Town Meeting. So there's, and there's lots more information available through the Secretary of State's Office. I wanted to read just a brief quote from the foreword of this book. It's actually written by Deborah Markovitz, the former Secretary of State. "Town meeting is much, much more than a symbolic exercise. It is here that citizens can actually legislate. It is here that, like nowhere else, that we fully participate in government. And it is here that government is a practice and not just a concept. Any observer of contemporary Vermont culture will tell you that the town meeting is as important to our communities today as it was during the earliest days of statehood. While it is undisputed that more people turn out when voting by Australian ballot, the quality of the participation is different. When we meet face to face to discuss and debate issues and to share a meal, we change the quality of democracy in the community for all 365 days of the year. At traditional town meeting, we get to know neighbors whose lives are different from ours, whose interests may be at odds with our own. By listening to one another at town meeting, we build social ties that make it easier for us to find common solutions to problems that might otherwise divide our town." And that, when I read that, I thought, and it's especially important today in the face of the climate emergency. We're going to need stronger and stronger community ties. So that's, I'm going to stop there and recommend a couple of books.
Can I take you back on what Laurel said? Just that I was, I was really moved by the town meeting last year. I sat next to Wayne Blanchard, who, you know, and in our conversation during the meeting around the edges, helped me to see that, you know, those that voted in favor, let's do away with the traditional town meeting and just have Australian ballot, were doing so because they really were thinking about the people that weren't here in the room. And those who were here in the room, the majority, as you know, said, no, the town, the traditional town meeting is important. And I left inspired to like, you know, there were so many ideas, people saying, you know, I have an idea, I have an idea, people talking about childcare and potluck suppers and other ideas for making town meeting more attractive to more people. And I determined to do something about it. And of course, I got busy with life. And it's only since Rick and Bonnie started working on the survey, you know, that I've gotten kind of re-inspired. And basically, I read the book that Laurel's talking about. I found 43 ideas in there about making town meetings more attractive, more lively, more vibrant, more effective. And I'm inspired to just get together with other townspeople to, to come up with concrete suggestions, you know, maybe we have a few ideas, we're going to try this here and a few more from the next year. And I, you know, I know you folks are all really busy on the Select Board. You know, you don't need to do all the work yourself. I'm convinced that we can find other people to step forward and do some of that work. So I'm glad you're doing a survey. And it'll be great to get that information. But basically, I would just, you know, like you to know, my intention is to, to talk to lots and lots of people in the town and come up with positive ideas for improving town meeting, some of which probably will involve the Select Board, you know, or the Town Clerk. And, you know, we'll come to you with our ideas. But I don't feel like we have to get into the specifics tonight. I know you've got a long agenda. So sort of just asking for your blessing, although I'm not sure I need it just to talk to my neighbors. But, you know, I really, it was clear there was sort of a mandate at the last town meeting, you know, let's do something about improving things. And, you know, I know you folks are getting around to it now, but I'm ready to kind of jump on, on the project as well.
Do you have a list of those 43 ideas?
Yeah, but I don't want to take your time to explain them all now and stuff like that.
You want to make copy of them?
Okay, I'm not sure that they'll make sense without the board. I got page numbers and stuff. Why don't we talk after? Because I don't want to waste the whole meeting's time. But I'll be glad to get them to you, Bonnie.
Right.
Yeah.
Thank you guys for taking the time for having that initiative. Would it be a working group? What would we call this group of people that you want to get together?
Yeah, I feel like it's something informal, but we'll come up, I mean, you know, I mean, some ideas are like talking to all of anybody new in town, you know, we can just do that informally. But some ideas might be, I mean, like one example that would involve, just one example that would involve the Select Board, one of the suggestions in the book is people are more likely to come to the meeting when there's something real to be decided as opposed to just hearing like people has recommended and rubber stamping it. And what if you took something controversial out of the budget and presented it as a separate article? You know, so that you really get townspeople involved. Yes, I'm in favor of that.
Sometimes you do that.
Sometimes you do, yeah. So just, I mean, that's like one small thing, but just to, to have more interesting things, more reasons that people want to come.
I think that, I mean, this is an item on our agenda, but.
I'm sorry, what?
This is an item on our agenda tonight, so we'll be talking about it. But one of the big things that this survey, if we do it, might do is just get everybody's attention to think about this. Every voter gets a postcard, say, wow, you know, I guess you really need to think about this, you know? So that would be, you know, the first little spark that we'll try and set to get, get that conversation really going.
And there can be articles in the paper, there can be front porch forum messages, et cetera, et cetera.
Hey, Steve, thanks.
Thank you all very much.
Hey, anyone else? See none? Mr. Pickupman, this manager's report.
Thank you. So a few things, just a couple of leftover items from our summer schedule that are still not complete. The Pine Street sidewalks, we were hoping to have completed this week. The section that we've already put out and dug up, and so that'll be done. And then we won't finish the full paving for the sidewalk for this year. It's going to get too cold. It's already starting to get cold at night. We're blanketing the concrete. But at a certain point in time, we're not going to get the quality that we want. So at the end of this week, I think we'll probably have to call that project off. And talking with the contractor, he's going to hold his price for next spring, so we're fine there. It's just something that we're going to have to hold over and start up again in the spring. The same with the asphalt sidewalks, talking with the Springfield paving, they're still behind on the paving. They're not going to get out the sex and be able to finish those sidewalks, but they're going to hold their price for that as well. So they'll go out and finish that off as well in the springtime. So we'll have those two projects that will still be hanging out. I put on everybody's seat a copy of an updated inventory of trees that are in the parking lot that we're going to be looking at as part of the bridge, the bridge project. Some of the, some of the designs are impacting some of these trees. And there was a lot of discussion about what was there and the fact that it was a community project that put the species that were there, so they wanted to make sure that they knew what was there originally. So you can see that there's a list of the types of trees, the number of trees and their current locations. We'll also then have to work with our final design team, which we have not scheduled yet, to come back and present one more time on some of the final design details that we've been talking through. And those include the rail design on the bridge, the final decision on lighting, as well as this, the tree plan and the replanting plan. So DHB and the D-Trans will be coming back at some point in time. We go late this fall or early in the new year to finalize those pieces, and then that project will be ready for bidding, hopefully sometime later in the winter. So we'll let you know. But I just wanted to share that information with you now, since it had been a previous conversation.
Scott, will CAS be involved or tree warden?
Yes, I'll bring, I've not had a chance. I just got this information this afternoon, so I'll share this with CAS and we'll, we'll have a chance to have a much more involved discussion at a future meeting. We are doing leaf collection in the village, so I'm sure you noticed that the guys are out and about picking up the leaves and finalizing the last of our cleanups. And then the next thing we're doing now is obviously preparing it. Sounds a little bit depressing, but we are putting together our plows and our sanders and our salt. It's already, the salt bins are full, the sanders are ready to go. So we have a bit of forecast, we'll be starting that, that time of the year, we'll start to salt and sand and we'll be into our winter season. So hopefully we'll have a decent one. It won't be terrible, but we are ready to go if everything is in pretty decent shape at the moment.
Okay, anyone have any questions for Scott? I think we're done.
Yes. Scott, where does it stand with the replacement of the street light at the corner of the Brown Water Park?
So we've had a couple of, so we did order a new multi-head and we're waiting to, it's not, not complete. And then we have about six or eight additional streetlights that we want to replace. And we're waiting to do that with the contractor who also, we ordered the new panel for the, for the streetlights in general, which is in this, in the alley, which is still not here. So we've been in touch with them about every week, 10 days. As soon as that comes in, we'll switch those out and hopefully put that up as well at the same time. So we won't have to pay them at one time.
Another question, Scott, the photovoltaic array that's being put in, I don't know, one of three, what is the status of that?
Spoke with them this afternoon. They are still working with Green Mountain Power on the access pieces. And so I talked with Justin Mount and the folks from, from the solar company. So that is proceeding. They thought they were going to have to change the alignment, but they're going to go ahead and work on the existing alignment to remember now. There's an active gravel operation now on the other property that abuts our property. But they were able to work out some things with the current owner, so they'll be able to use that alignment. So Justin is still going to be putting that in. Talking with them today, they said they plan on being ready to go by the end of this year, that it'll be up and operational. There'll be some additional amendments coming back to the board later on in November, early December, sort of finalizing that project as well. We'll be get that first initial payment, as we talked about previously. So we'll keep you up to date and give you an update later.
First payment was $50,000, is that what you told?
Yes.
Anything else? Okay, seeing that's gone, let's go down to the agenda. The first item is the presentation draft audit. Everybody has a copy. And I guess Ron, you're up.
You guys see and hear me?
Yes, Ron, how are you? All good?
Good evening. Good to see you guys, Scott. Good seeing you. So, so we're a month earlier than last year, so let's give you the good indication that, that we were ahead in this schedule as we continue to, you know, just deliver you information, deliver the audits timely, et cetera. So there's the first piece of good, good news. So you guys, you know, we proposed that you got to, I think you have a draft, you know, of like 100 pages. And here's what I just want to do. I don't know what you have. How about I just hit the highlights of it? How does that sound, you all?
I think that's what we got to say, Ron.
Yeah, we only gave him a small, the small handout.
Oh, okay. So Alyssa, you pulled out those pages that we had discussed?
Yes.
Yeah. So how about I hit the highlights of those? I think there's like seven pages that she pulled out of those financial statements. How's that sound?
That's great.
So your general fund, you know, your fund balance last year was about $1,070,000. This year it's about $770,000 on 6/30/23. We like to see that 30, 60 to 90 days of your operating budget. Last year you were about 60 days of what that math was. This year, you're about 45 days. So, so it's gone down. And I'll share with you why it went down. First of all, you guys planned it to go down by $200,000 to kind of throw some money at tax relief. But if, if there was such a thing as a bad budget year for Rockingham, where you kind of got hit by many things, you know, that I'll talk about here, this 23 audit was one of them. Public works being one, you know, fuel costs, maintenance costs, you know, a piece of equipment that came in early that you had to purchase, you know, in this fiscal year. You know, your theater was over budget, benefits were over budget from what you expected. You had a roof repair, you know, that was like $80,000 over budget. That was a tough year for you guys. And I think even kind of like going over what that year was and some of these unforeseen things that you didn't have as you guys are putting your 23 budget, literally to expect it to go down by $200,000 and have all those other things happen to you, you know, and, and that number is now 300? I don't, you know, a bad budget year, but it could have been a lot worse financially, you guys, and it just wasn't. And it was really kind of mitigated by strong revenue projections, you know, what you guys received, you know, over what you guys anticipated for this fiscal year budget. You know, so, so like I say, bad news, some tough budgeting things that, you know, became unexpected that you had to mitigate through your 23 budget. Good news is, you know, is it really didn't impact you that much, you know, as far as that, because of your strong revenue projections is the, you know, is the best way I can say it. I mean, solidly, you know, there's, you know, there's, 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 you know, continued improvement, Alyssa, really kind of working with us, making those books, you know, you know, as crystal clear as possible, pulling some of the, you know, for lack of a better word, the complicating things like grants out of your general fund and making their own separate funds, so we can really audit quicker, faster and, you know, and deliver information, because we don't have to kind of untangle that web. You know, financially, I think that you guys, like I say, I'm, I'm concerned that your fund balance has, you know, has gone down to 45 days. That's a concern of mine. You know, that would be the biggest concern if somebody said, Ron, talk to me. Being over budget, well, you expected to use 203, $200,000 anyway. You went down $300,000. So fact of the matter is, is that really, that really didn't mitigate it. But what it did is it brought you down below magical number of 60 days. So, and that 45 days is concerning to us. And, and I guess the question is, we kind of like get into 24, did you guys use any money for 24 tax relief like you did in 23?
We haven't proposed anything yet with the 24 budget, Ron, but at this point.
25.
Yeah.
24, we're in.
What is it, Scott, with, with 24? What'd you guys use, if any?
I don't think, did we use 100?
There was 100,000.
I think it was 100,000, yeah.
I would probably, Scott, as you get closer to 25, I'd probably kind of see and prognosticate, you know, where 24 fiscal year is, because I'm not sure you guys, if you use 100 and need 100 for 24's budget, you know, that's going to bring you down to 30 days, you know? And I'll tell you, Scott, I don't know if you can afford to go that low. That would be my advice to the Town of Rockingham.
Right.
This is the lowest we've seen your fund balance in quite a few years. And, you know, we can explain, you know, some of the things and some of the investments that the town's making, obviously in public works, roads, infrastructure and the theater and things like that. But, you know, to, to continue to use it for, for kind of like, you know, that, that stabilization, that tax relief, I'm not sure you guys that, you know, that you guys are going to have it there for your FY '25 budget. That would be probably the biggest message that I deliver, you know, to you this evening. You know, all your other funds are solid, your revolving loan funds, your, you know, your library fund, your reserve fund, your capital projects, you know? So, 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 so I think that the thing, like I say, that I would just raise my hand with this audit, you know, would be, hey, your, your fund balance has, has taken a hit, a hit this year and gone to 45 days. And that's something that we certainly want to keep an eye on, because you don't want to go, have it go below that, you guys, especially with a over $7 million budget.
We're looking at playing it close to the belt and expense log, because that's what you're saying, basically.
Yeah, and that's why I say, as you guys and probably what March Town Meeting, I'm going to say you probably what, Scott, January-ish, you're starting to put early, January probably, end of January, a bow tie on your 25 budget, correct?
Yeah, we'll have our warning out by, usually the board will finalize it beginning of January, then we have it out in the public by the middle of the month.
I just really think you guys, you know, for 25, I'd probably, Scott, we can work with Alyssa, you know, I, I'd kind of prognosticate where you guys are landing the first half of year and see if we can look into the crystal ball. Good news is, you guys, is we got some reimbursement and claim money on the way from, you know, from some grants that'll help you, maybe 100, $150,000, you know? But, but you're going to need that to get back to 60 days. And my concern is, is, is that's really where you need to stay, you know, is that 60 days. So maybe, you know, in January, December, you know, as we just put this audit to bed, kind of, Scott, as you're getting ready to issue that warning, let's, let's, let's just look into the crystal ball if you guys are thinking of using some money, because I don't think 25 is going to be the year to do it.
Right. Now, Ron, we didn't put the debt schedule on for the board review, but I know one of the, one of the financial goals of the board was to not add to their debt. So we have been paying down debt the last three fiscal years. And, and the good news is, I think at the end of the 25 budget and I think in '26, we'll see some larger numbers starting to fall off of that as well.
Basically, you mean your principal and interest payments, Scott, to kind of free up some money within the budget?
Correct.
Yeah, and, and Scott, are you looking for me to kind of like validate what those are and when they're going to happen? Because I'm actually looking at it right now.
Yeah, because I think the big ones that are coming off are obviously, I think the town hall, we have two more payments on the town hall renovations.
2025, you know, is, is that one. That's one of the bigger ones that you got out there. And then 2000, this next year, you got another one falling off this next year, the fiscal year that you're in right now. And you guys, that, that's probably close to over $400,000, you know, within the budget that you're going to free up. So that's the good news, you know? But like I say, that, 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 that's just something you want to be careful. If you're going to reallocate and reappropriate, you know, I think it probably ought to be worth a pretty, pretty healthy discussion on what that's going to be reallocated for.
Well, yeah, and I think the board had made a decision. There was a discussion when we looked at our five-year spending for pavement to issue a million dollars worth of bonds to help off some of the cost of paving. And the board looked at the schedule and made a decision that they were going to pay with cash, and it might mean that we had some leaner.
What, what year, Scott? So I can probably give you some insight on that one with some good news. What, what year are you thinking, Scott? Is that going to be like a 25 item for paving?
No, we're going to, we're going to continue to pay for paving with cash. And I think we're saving our, our bond debt for either buildings or for capital investments like the bridges, our share of bridges. But those now are being pushed out to '27 and '28.
So let me give you some good news, let me give you some good news on that, you guys. You know, back in 2021, the Build Back America Great Package, you know, got passed, and it actually just got signed into law, I understand, in August of '23. There, there, there is a lot of money coming to the state of Vermont for infrastructure needs for local government, you know? And, and, and I can tell you, our state got $2.5 billion to be passed down to the local, you know, governments for infrastructure needs, roads included. And Scott, I think Vermont got, well, like $1.3 billion if I remember that. And Scott, if you send me an email, I can tell you exactly what the state of Vermont, you know, got. But that's for infrastructure needs, Scott, you know, that you're going to, you know, have available to you. And I equate it, Scott, the equivalent of APRA. It's the second round of APRA funds, except they're calling it the infrastructure package. So there's some good news is you're paying for cash, is maybe we can inject some cash back into Rockingham's pocket, you know, over the next two or three years to kind of make up for that money that you're budgeting for and paying out of your pocket, Scott. So I think that's great news. And we're actually starting to see it in our state. We're starting to see it in the state of Vermont here now, you guys. And, you know, now that it kind of got signed back in August, you know, to happen. And Scott, I see that happening for you over the next two and three years.
No, that's great.
That's about all I got for financial highlights. I mean, there weren't a lot. We continue to clean some things up, you know, make some adjustments in the books. You know, obviously the timeliness of us sitting here having this conversation ought to speak volumes. Alyssa, you know, continues to give us information and understand, you know, things. And, and like I say, keep it up, Alyssa, keep it up, you know?
Good job.
Okay, anyone have any questions for Ron?
I guess the only other thing, Ron, is we will have to do a single audit, I think, I don't know if the board was aware, because of some of the grants that we've received. So that'll be something becoming.
Yeah, Pastor Scott, Alyssa and I are already on it. That's already, Scott, I'd argue it's three quarters done now. We've already done the work to kind of like complete it, so.
Okay, that's great.
And just, just for, just for that single audit, you guys spent more than three quarters of a million dollars of federal funds. It's due by March 31st. I think that Deb, Kathy and Kim have virtually already got all the math and everything done. There's probably a couple more things that we need from Alyssa, Scott, but yeah, that will, we should be able to put an end to that this month as well.
I probably have to refile that CIFA too, right?
Yeah, you're going to have to refile the CIFA, but wait till we finish it. We're going to redo your schedule of federal awards and then just take that, Alyssa, and send that off to them.
Okay.
So Scott, would be, if we have to tighten our belts somewhat, the meetings on November 21st, December 5th and December 19th, well, where will we get into the details of what we, what we're spending, where?
Well, each of them have various operating or, you know, so I put in your, your packet, Rick, a proposed budget schedule.
I see that, yeah.
Right, so probably the first meeting on the 21st, we're going to start looking at the major capital and debt. So that's the first piece. The other ones are outside, sort of, you know, updates with the library and social services.
Since Highway Department is such a big chunk of our, of our budget.
Right.
Will we be able to ask Andy some questions or should it go to you?
Absolutely, no, absolutely.
He will come and we will talk about it.
Yep. Yeah, so that'll be on the 5th, then we got another, you know, an update on the 19th, which will just be mostly working through whatever issues or concerns. And then we have it on for at least the adoption of the warning on the 2nd, so that we can have it ready to go.
Anyone else? Here.
Yeah, Ron, do you know how much it costs to do the, the single audit? It's because we're closing out BF Garage Grant and they, there's funds in there to pay for a single audit.
So there's a cost and, you know, and the proposal and ending engagement letter if one's necessary, and I think it's up to $5,000.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else for Ron or Scott?
That's about it. Scott, just let me know, you know, I'd be more than happy to work with Alyssa if you guys need a sounding board for 25 budget and some prognostications, so.
Sure, we'll have a chat.
Yep, look forward to it.
Sounds good.
Everybody take care.
Ron, on the agenda, cemetery tuition update.
Before, before we jump into cemetery, could we take something out of order? Because I got Ryan here, and we're going to be a while on the cemetery. And I'm thinking maybe the recreation discussion might be shorter. So maybe if we could do that, then Ryan doesn't have to sit here for an extra half hour or whatever we're going to take.
He likes to, he likes to hang out.
I'm sure he'd be more than happy.
He's not a footballer anymore, that's done.
Yeah, we could talk.
Unfortunately, but.
So anyway, so thank you. So I'd asked Ryan to come for a couple reasons. We're still working through some of our offerings for next year. We had a lot of challenges this summer, and, and these are not unusual or just related to us, but regionally. One of the biggest ones being trying to find lifeguards, so that we could extend the pool hours and try to staff the Saxon River as well. That was a huge problem, so Ryan was gonna give us an update hopefully, and what we might try to do for next year to try to alleviate this. But I can tell you that this is a regional problem, that every community I spoke to was challenged with opening and maintaining their summer schedules, because they just can't get enough folks trained and staffed up to be able to offer the hours that they want to offer. So I guess that is a little bit of an introduction, so I'll turn it back to Ryan, and maybe he can update us from there.
You're on, Ryan.
Yeah, Scott and I talked, um, I'm gonna try to, for the summertime, we try to push more to the high school. And also, we talked about putting a thing out, indeed, that also, we paid for the certification. And I had two people actually fail it, because they couldn't do some tests. So I think the, just we can't even get kids to pass the test anymore. I think it's more from the COVID, for laying around, so kids are not as athletic, or a lot of the athletic kids are not doing it. And you have to, you have to swim 12 laps, then you have to retrieve a brick, and then you have to dry water for two minutes. A lot of kids can't do that anymore. But, I mean, other than that, uh, that's our goal, is to push it through a little bit more. I'm gonna, we're gonna, because they started doing the lifeguard certification, usually, I think, in January, February, and then it goes right to about May, June, so it's gonna be, it's four, five months to try to get kids certified. And also between sports, because it's a, it's like a three, four-day class, so you have to sometimes miss practice or gain, or not games, but trying to fit that schedule and finding a spot where they can do it. And I had to drive my daughter down to Boston to get certified for WSI, so. So I mean, that's where we're coming to.
Right.
And I was, we were open a lot more than, you know, Springfield had a lot of days, they were struggling more than we were. And the only other aspect I could see is the, the village of Saxon River, because we're helping with the geese problem over there, with the, the geese species all over the beach, is a big deterrent for people wanting to go out there. So that's another thing that we're gonna have to talk with, uh, is Samantha's done her best. She's the only one person, so we need to get something on that, the Saxon River.
One of the things we might have to do is look at some regional help on getting lifeguards, because in the past, Ryan was able to work with other communities to get kids trained when they would, they would do a, a class, right? But what's happened is, because people are so stressed to get staff, they wouldn't take us unless the kids committed to working for the community where they were going to get the training. So that was sort of.
Some area, yeah, some area, yeah, some of them were doing that.
So that's become a real challenge, because it used to be pretty cooperative, people would help each other out, and that helped create a better pool, and we all got more staffing because of it. Now people have started to play the Hunger Games here, so it's getting, it's getting a little more challenging to try to.
Trying to figure this out.
Sounds great.
It's not great.
Just sticking out of the box, Ryan, you ever had the adult fly, I mean.
That might be time to see your lifeguard.
Actually, wanted to do it this year, he helped out, he's, he got it, got certified. But there's, you know, yeah, there's a lot of things still gotta pass, so. But, yeah, I mean, we can always, I think as long as you have a couple, I mean, we gotta go by our own, we go by the guidelines of American Cross, but we also can run our own type of, you know, how many lifeguards we have on. As long as we have one lifeguard out there, and maybe other people that are water safety, because you have, you can have the water safety instructors. You know, it's called like wire safety or observation or something, you can do it online. It's like a free class, or like a $10 class. I mean, there's things like that too, if you want to think outside the box, it's like that, but I don't know how.
I'm hoping indeed might bring some people in that are non-traditional types, that maybe will get some.
Well, it's like a little bit out of the box, I mean, colleges are the same thing, you're probably having the same problem there, yeah.
Well, I usually, I usually get a college, I usually get them for four years, sometimes six. But we got, I got hit, like seven or eight of my lifeguards all left at the same time. That's when I got hit hard, and then I only recouped about four. But I believe I'm getting all my lifeguards back from last year, but maybe just one might not be doing it. But, so I should be getting all my lifeguards from last year, so then if I can add another four or five, we should be all set.
And then they get paid, right?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yep.
I think they'll be so adult, it might be.
Well, especially too, they're just community minded.
Get me past the test, that's the thing, I mean, you know.
You gotta be certified.
You need to show up and watch the water, you gotta be. Come here, you gotta be able to.
No liability, yeah, so.
Yeah, I'm handling that.
Be great if we get some. But there must be, you know, just community-minded people who, you know, maybe not doing it so much as a job, it's more just to, you know.
Keep the facility up, which is really.
Some people are really avid swimmers.
Right. So we'll try, we're gonna have to try some non-traditional ways, because like I said, it's a real challenge right now to try to get enough staffing to give, give the hours that we want to get.
I mean, this is the first year, I mean, I've always had enough all over the years. We're doing it, I don't know, 13, 14, 15 years now, so. But when I ran into it once, almost another time, but I figured it out in the last minute stacking with people.
Can we talk a little bit, I'm sorry.
Saxon River, are we still gonna be planning to go there? I mean, God, you know, if they ever get that.
Oh, yeah.
Between the beavers and the geese.
Yeah, I mean, my plan is I would just to put two, two people out there.
I, you know, maybe we get some VA kids or something, or they might be interested, you know, a lot of them are out of town, so obviously, so you, it's kind of hard to.
I, the last two kids I had out there were local, and they lived right by the, the ponds, which was convenient. But then they, you know, now they're, they're seniors.
Yeah.
This year, so they moved on.
Yeah.
With other ventures. Because then, it, it is a boring job up there, we're only averaging four or five people a day. And that's from 11 to four or five off, so it's a long, long day with not a lot of people out there.
Yeah.
So.
Ryan, you want to talk a little bit about what's going on with facilities and winter sports? Obviously, you know, the school's been having issues with closing off some of their areas, and that impacts some of our programming, so maybe get more.
So we have a lot of things up in the air. The middle school just had their testing done for the PCBs. We're, we should be hearing back from the high school this week about maybe hopefully a reentry plan back into the gym up there. But hopefully, crossing our fingers, that the renovation that they did there 10 years ago paid off. So the, the numbers are not there, or low enough, so we can still maintain there for winter sports. But I've already been in talks with Westminster, I said if that happens, then we're probably just gonna combine everything at Westminster. And I'll just run my, myself throughout the week to help ref games and stuff like that, just to help them. We joined two teams last year, because the numbers are getting a little low for basketball, so it's nothing new for us. Skeetos mode, ready to go. We put ice rink up soon, but that, depending on the weather, hoping, the last year of weather was awful for both. So didn't get much things up there besides sledding.
Does Westminster gym size?
It's almost a full size.
Like Sanco, or?
No, it's bigger.
Oh, it's a big, I was just wondering.
Yeah, they, they did that renovation early 2000s.
Oh, okay.
And they built, put like a pretty big gym. It's bigger than the middle schools.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Oh, interesting.
Yeah.
Anybody have the questions for Ryan?
I'm doing adult volleyball still too, so, we said that we had 17 teams last year, so that was good. That's another thing to be riding on that.
Okay, I guess we're all set. Nobody wants to be on you anymore, so I guess we can let you go.
And don't forget, we do have pickleball lines up at the tennis court, and the lights are on until nine o'clock.
Really?
Until, for another couple of weeks.
Till the snow flies, yeah, pickleball.
In between ping pong and tennis, and then.
It's like tennis for people that aren't running around a lot.
The group ladies go there all day morning.
Thank you, Ryan.
Too tied up with that. But anyway, all right, now can we move on to the cemetery?
Yes, thank you so much.
Let's get the cemetery commission update.
So just for the boards, Diana, she's coming up and getting organized. I did put in the current cemetery maintenance RFP, because there had been some discussion about, about the brass cutting and weed whacking, and I'm sure we'll talk about that in more detail. We have a couple of appointments, and then I'm sure that Diana will fill you in as well, but she's having some difficulty with another member of the commission, and she might potentially want to replace. And there is a third person that could potentially then take that spot, but that was not ready for tonight's meeting. So we'll do the two that we have, and then maybe the next one we'll do for the meeting of the 21st, so. And that should get at least her commission back to almost full capacity, so.
Have at it, kid.
Oh, where to start? Um, so I just basically wanted to kind of give you, you know, a sense of where we are going forward, what we've already done. Because there has been a lot of work done. We've had the instability in the board, but we're still, we're still actively getting things together. As most of us know, there's been a lot of work done at the cemeteries with the pruning of the trees. And thank you, Rick, for being a blessing and taking on the chapel area.
Sure.
But that's been really amazing, and I did bring some before and after pictures, so you can kind of see how it affects the visual aspect of the cemetery when that maintenance actually isn't being done. And, I mean, it's pretty, it's definitely much different. On the back is the Rockingham Meeting House, on the front is the Oak Hill Cemetery. And this is just, you know, kind of a little bit of an example.
Thank you.
It just kind of, it changes the whole visual aspect of a cemetery and the, the piece that it's supposed to bring. So I just wanted to kind of bring that to attention, the maintenance going forward on the trees.
You've done a lot of this pruning yourself, right?
Yes.
That's great, thank you so much for that.
So I did speak with Janelle Haskell of TerraFlora Landscaping and Gardening before I did touch any of the trees, just to kind of make sure that my process and what I was doing was the proper thing to do. And she gave the AOK, and then I started doing it. Uh, Rockingham Meeting House is pretty much done, so those trees are fairly all set. Obviously, there's still a lot of breakage, because they're large trees, it's hard to get up that high. So that'll be next year. Oak Hill is a work in progress, but I feel like after this first trim, the maintenance on the trees won't be much. When you deal with hydrangeas, it's just a basic trimming, doesn't have to be drastic. Oak Hill, unfortunately, uh, the, the, the trees were pretty much growing into the ground, so they needed a bit more of an extensive trim. Didn't want to have to take off as much as I did, but unfortunately, I didn't really have a choice. But next year.
It's not too sad, I'd say, too, right?
Yeah, yeah, I had to cut down some, uh, we cut down some lilacs, but if we're talking about the actual larger trees, you know, there is still a lot of issues with the larger trees as well that need to be cut down.
And that, that, too, I'm, I'm sorry.
It's gonna be a cheeseburger.
There's a lot at, um, Oak Hill and at the Meeting House that still need to be taken down. Luckily, Cass was able to get a quote for three trees that were in Saxon's River that were basically threatening the stability of the carriage area. So that's gonna be figured out and scheduled, the tree company that he's working with is kind of backed up. So we're not quite sure when that's gonna fall. So there's that spiel, let's see. In discussions with, with a lot of the people who came to the, the conference at the Meeting House, there was a lot of really positive feedback from them. One portion of that feedback was making sure that our volunteers have all of the proper things that they need. You know, any, any guidelines and this, that, and one thing that was brought up was a handbook. So I went through and kind of looked at multiple different handbooks, kind of from around the area, some are small, some are larger. I think with our more historic cemeteries, it's important for us to have all of the proper information in the handbook. So there is a little bit to this, and I'm sorry to get into beforehand. But this is the handbook that I threw together, this is not the final copy, edits are encouraged. So if anybody just wants to let me know. So this is just gonna be kind of given to everybody to make sure that, that we're all on the same page with, we need to care for our cemeteries. Our volunteers are, you know, expected to, you know, do certain things. And this, so this gives an extensive lowdown on what they should do, not do. They'll also be given like National Park Service information, and basically a whole packet. I didn't want to bombard you with all the info, but I think, I think the handbook was really important. And now that, you know, at HR, there's all of these proper volunteer forms, that's also gonna be, you know, really good, because it'll button us up pretty tight.
When you were doing the, the trimming of those trees, did you have to contact anybody that has planted material on their grave sites before you just went in and cut them down, or did you just?
I think the majority of the trees that were actually planted were done by basically the cemetery. I'm not really sure who planted them.
I don't know, I'm just curious.
Well, most of them are much older. A lot of them, you know, that were up at Oak Hill, you know, have been fairly aged, so I'm not sure there would be anybody to talk to. I do believe that as the cemetery commission, making sure that people kind of keep up on the plants that they have, and if they can't maintain them, then either we maintain them or we ask them to take them out. But there really isn't anybody to ask.
And it did seem, I believe that most of those shrubs are like part of the original landscaping.
Yeah, yeah.
Of the cemetery, so I don't think that they were actually put in by individuals on the grave sites as much as they were just part of the overall.
Because I know that, that wet snow that we got really damaged a bunch of them, and then they finally got really cut down and. Pretty good shape.
Yeah.
But they'll come back probably, you know, so.
They look a little rough right now, just solely because I had to take so much off. But once the new growth is, it's, you know, there's enough left to where it should be more vibrant. And what I'm looking to do is, you know, essentially make them all come to a mushroom shape. And once we get it to that point, all we have to do is maintain anything broken and trim it to make sure it stays the right height. So it's a really easy maintenance. Obviously, we know the, the, the worst part is gonna be the mowing and stuff. But yeah, so that's the handbook. I did add in there, you know, the little spiel about the town is also thankful, so just, I don't know if you wanted to kind of approve that or read through, and just let me know. Okay, let's see. Oh, another thing is, is that came out of the conference, is the group of people that were there were really, really, you know, dedicated to what they were doing. And what came out of that also was a group of people that's gonna be working as a volunteer group to kind of look at the, the Rockingham Meeting House Cemetery and, you know, the needs of it. And we're gonna hopefully do this group through the winter too. And a lot of that'll consist of like research and, you know, things we kind of want to understand about our occupants. I mean, it is a historical cemetery, and I think having access to our, you know, the history of our older people is gonna be really good for the people that visit. Not just them, but also family members who don't really know the history of their family as well. So that's another good thing that came out, and we're, we're still kind of figuring that out. And I figured after this meeting, you know, having the other people on the commission with me, we'll be able to move forward and kind of, you know, start actually talking about these more and less than, you know, actively making it work. So that was a great thing. The conference really was a good lead into all of the. The conference really was a good lead into all of this work being done. It was really amazing to see like the happiness and dedication that people brought to what we were doing, and it kind of boosted us all to realize that there are people passionate about these cemeteries. You know, it's not just us here who live in town who have been here, it's people from all over the place. William Hosley, Bill Hosley, he's from Connecticut, and he has an invested interest in, you know, the cemeteries here because he went to Vermont Academy. So he's been in this area since the 70s, taking pictures, learning things. He has extensive knowledge on the history here with the cemeteries, the Wright family. You know, he's willing to do educational things, programs. So, you know, this has reached so many people besides us here, you know, so the importance of it is there. And I feel like the more that we do and the more that people see, the more volunteers will get, you know, and just the trimming, I have seen people be like, wow, you know, this is great, and I'm like, yeah, hey, you want to volunteer? Sure, here's a paper.
Bring your tools, boy.
I got it in my car. Come hang out, here's some gloves. So that's just, you know, that's a really, really good thing, and the conference was amazing to push that forward. Also, it allowed us access to professionals, you know, like Dennis Montagno from the National Park Service, I mean, his information was just amazing, and Francis Miller, you know, resetting a stone and mending it, you know, the knowledge that he has is amazing. I met with Charles Marchand, and he is on the Cemetery Commission for Townsend, and he is also the Wyndham County Representative for Vermont Old Cemetery Association, and I just met with him, and, you know, he's willing to help us, you know, kind of see where we need to go. He's been doing it for many, many, many years, and he's been involved in Townsend for a long time, and he's been with Boca for a long time as well. So going forward, we do have these people behind us saying, we're willing to help, you know, with the process and figuring this all out, so it's going to be great. Having those professionals and their input is important to make sure that we're doing all of this the right steps.
Yeah, that's definitely, that's something we wanted to make sure we don't have people just kind of going loose on their own and going in potentially doing damage, or, you know, they really have to stay within the parameters of what is safe and appropriate for volunteers to be doing, because we also, you know, we don't want anything where someone has the potential to be injured or to do injury to any grave stones.
Well, this is wonderful. Oh, this is wonderful, isn't it? Oh, yeah.
Thank you. Well, and our plan is to make sure that we also have proper signage, you know, for people to know, no, you're not allowed to just come here. If you want to volunteer, that's great, just make sure that you do it through the proper channels and making sure people have access to what they need and the people that they need to contact is really important. We have been taking the input of the community into, you know, full consideration, because obviously that's why we're here, is the community wanted it. You know, so their opinions are very important, and making sure, I think, that we have signage so people know like, oh, okay, so I can't do this, just preventing things, that's another thing that will be happening. Because I think some of the damage that we do see in our cemeteries are, you know, kind-hearted people wanting to do something good, they just didn't realize that they shouldn't. So, you know, and again, the handbook also helps clear that up.
So, do people have the right to clean a stone of the family?
Absolutely, absolutely. You know, we can tell people what to use, but at the end of the day, you know, if that's your family's stone, you know, you can pretty much, you know. But I think allowing people to have access to the right ways of doing it, which, you know, would be, you know, we do have a put department page now to have these things accessible to people, you know, and if they do choose to go in and not tell anybody, which we do not want, you know, at least they have the knowledge of what not to do. Because we know people, they like to do just whatever they want to, as long as they have the accurate information.
Yeah, and it's one thing if it's your family's stones, we can't, you know, go at other people's family's stones without going through the proper channels. It's very important to emphasize.
And I mean, we still ask families to just let us know for documentary, documentation purposes, you know, if they do work on the stone, because it's really good to keep track of basically everything that kind of happens, you know, so we know if there's an issue, we know what to go back to. And documentation is a huge part of what we're doing right now, you know, like doing plot surveys, making sure we know what's going on, the condition of the stone, all the measurements, so we can have everything formed into a master plan, which is the eventual goal. You know, having proper layouts, proper plot numbers, making sure everything's all together, obviously, that's going to take a long time for us to do, since, you know, the cemeteries that we're dealing with do have quite a few stones. But again, if we are able to properly train people to do these things, such as the volunteer group that we, you know, have that's committed to doing stuff, we can get it done. It's just going to take time.
Now, can somebody just go in there and sort of load his voice real, and then everyone is going to start checking, how do I, or how to work?
So inside of like our rules and regulations, when people go to kind of buy a plot or things like that, it can state you are only allowed to plant certain things.
Oh, okay.
It is recommended that you only allow people to plant certain things, because you don't want invasive things, you know, because then we have to maintain those invasive plants. I don't think it's necessarily specified in the papers, but we're going through like the procedures and all of that and trying to figure out what we have to add, you know, is everything structured properly? You know, and that'll end up coming back to the board for approval, because that's technically something that the board would vote on, you know, but I think making sure that we have a proper plot pricing, too, all of that has to still get looked at. You know, I've been pulling a lot of numbers and stuff from other towns who are similar size, have a similar amount of cemeteries. There is a lot of difference in everybody's structure, but it kind of gives us an understanding of options, which again, you know, once we get a little deeper into it, everybody will have access to this information, so we can all make decisions. But the people that also that are coming onto the board after today are, you know, also essential to what we're doing, you know, having people behind us on this commission who do have experience with a lot of things is also going to be important. So having the right group of people together is what we're doing.
Are the plot maps that Malcolm has, any of that have been a assistant?
As far as I know, that Oak Hill, there's no like mapping for Oak Hill that he has. The only map that we have is here at Town Hall. We are going to need copies of that, that was something that I had talked about, because I mean, if our sextant doesn't even have a copy of the layout, I mean, yeah, I didn't have access to one through him solely because the one that they have is too old. But I am going to send them copies once I'm able to hopefully, you know, get something, but I don't know if they do digital at all. I don't know if they're able to send me a copy, but-
I don't know.
I don't know, I don't know. But I do have an uncle that's a painter, so I won't need to. All right, let's see.
I noticed a quick point on Walter's handbook, too.
Well, if I may, keep a shout out to two families in particular who have joined in the effort to preserve family plots as a result, I think, of this energy and this enthusiasm. It's not just something where I think interested community members are going to do something to the cemetery or to family plots, but it's the families themselves, the Severance family who's now located out Manchester way, and not here, but they come every year, and they can see the deterioration of the family plot. And for a number of years, they wanted to do something to get it back up to speed, and monuments were cracked, broken, curving around the plot was all falling away, and we worked with them very closely to restore the plot, and it's all level, it's all cleaned, it's all been taken care of, and they're very, very, very happy. But there's another family, the Wolf family from upstate New York, who trace family roots here to Rockingham, and they participated in the conference, and the whole group of people, there were upwards of seven or eight people that helped to reset many of their smaller stones, and we removed one of the stones, it's actually beginning to fall apart, and it's an old stone carved by Moses Wright, historically, very significant stone, and we removed that, we're working with Francis Miller and with the family to restore the stone. So there's, you know, there is this ongoing interest in activity, and I think it's starting to spread out a little bit more with other folks who work with us.
And that's also part of what, you know, we're trying to do, is bring more people who have family there into the cemetery to kind of, you know, if they want to help out, that's fine, you know, but I think, you know, there's going to be more of an interest with the families that are here, you know, once we start getting all of this together, too, so. And it's all going to be really important, because obviously, community involvement is key, you know, if we didn't have the community, then, you know, so I do encourage people to reach out and, you know, let's talk about your family's plots, for sure. Oh, let's see. Is there anything else that specifically, Scott, did we want to chat about?
Well, I think the only other thing is, we do have, like I said, the one proposing to do some tree work at Saxon's River.
Yeah.
That's about $2,500. I have a schedule that Walter had prepared at the Meeting House, which is a lot more in-depth, and we have to work with Cass and see what those numbers look like, and then we'll have to talk to the board, because we, with the growing season this year, we did spend, as you can imagine, more money on cutting grass than we had anticipated, because it was raining and growing all summer, never seemed to stop, and we're still going to try to clean up leaves before the end of the year as well. So we might have to talk about this new request and see where we want to try to accommodate that and get some pricing for that as well, so.
Do we have to vote on the two new members of the cemetery commission?
We're kind of that next.
Yep.
That's the next slide. All right, so there's no further questions for Diana, then we'll move on to requests to fill two vacant spaces in the cemetery commission. There's letters of application, there are emails in the back up. One question I have, are any of these, are they local people, or are they, because I know we try to make, you know, people on these commissions to be from town.
Yes.
Yeah.
Caitlin does live right here in town, and you guys live right here in town.
I don't have to.
Yeah, yeah, so both, both local.
Okay. I don't know the names, that's why I was just asking.
New movers, they moved here, to replace, but you are originally from Burlington.
From Burlington, in the area.
Yeah.
Okay, we have a Caitlin Clark that would like to be on the committee, and also, we can do this in one motion. The other is Simon Spartalian, is that correct?
Right.
So someone wants to make a motion to appoint Caitlin and Simon, I'll entertain the motion.
Okay, I move to reappoint Caitlin Clark and Simon Spartalian to the cemetery commission.
I'll second that.
Main executive, to appoint Caitlin and Simon to the cemetery commission, is there any questions or discussion? Any here and done? All those in favor would say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay?
Aye.
Oh, you finally came, huh?
She's been there.
I've been listening.
I lost her once, but she came back.
Oh, that's why. The loss has been found, eh?
Sorry?
Yeah, okay, special thank you to Diana.
Yeah, good job.
You're doing a fantastic job.
All right, let's move on to approve intermunicipal agreement for local government shared services. This is the planning zoning area, so there are, I think there's a recommended-
Couple of things, so, yeah, there is a motion here somewhere. A motion for the approval that I could go ahead and sign the intermunicipal agreement, and then we also then have a second action that we have to take tonight as well, and that is to appoint Ryan as our zoning administrator, that we can then also then move forward with that. Gary is still very actively involved, but this will certainly, I'm sure, be welcomed by him, that he can free up more of his time to do the other tasks that we've been trying to juggle, so this has been a long time coming. We're going, we're going to evaluate this process as we go forward to see how we're going to accommodate this, to see if it works for not only the land use boards, but also this board and the community. We weren't overwhelmed with our recruiting efforts, and some of the folks that we were looking at didn't bring to the table the experiences and some of the background that these folks have, so we think this is the best of both worlds, given sort of where we are with our demands and our land use, and again, Gary won't be gone 100%, but he'll certainly be relieved of a lot of this excess burden, so I'm hopeful that this will give us some additional support. And land use is critical, you know, there's some big projects that we're working on, obviously, we want to update our zoning bylaws, which is a huge project, finishing the town plan, which is a very technical project that takes a lot of notice and follow-up, and just basically you have to be on top of it. And then just the traditional land use issues that come up, you know, the issues in front of the DRB, we're getting more requests for referrals to DRB for various zoning issues, and that's a good thing. So that also takes time and energy to put together those submissions for the DRB, so that they have an opportunity then to weigh in on some of these properties. Some of them have been community concerns, so we're hopeful that the DRB process will help bring some of these into compliance and help some of these neighborhoods get some relief from some of these problem properties, so I think all of these are positive steps, and certainly hope that we can move this process forward.
Okay, that being said, I'll entertain the motion to approve the intermunicipal agreement for local government shared services and authorize the manager to sign this document.
So who's?
I'll second.
And so say the whole thing, all right?
No. You're not going to make him say any.
It's like a oath of office.
Read Gary's stuff down, yeah. All right, do the second, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Most of us main executives approve the local agreement and authorize the manager to sign the document. Any discussion?
Only one question. Scott, when people come in for a permit, will they, will they do with Gary if he's, if Hama Lehi and Ryan are present?
Yeah, we've been trying to get people to come in when Ryan's here on Thursday, so we've been trying to publicize that. If they come in just as a off-street or they're looking for information, Gary's usually here, or I'm usually here, we've also been pulling Megan into that conversation.
Oh, good.
So we get them to at least get some level of information, get some guidance, and typically then, you know, depending upon how complicated the requests are, some, you know, other times they'll have to come back, obviously, if they have to do a full application or whatever the case may be, but at least they're getting, you know, the basic level of service when they walk in the door between those three folks. And occasionally, they come to me and I stumble along as best I can, so. It's not nearly as good a job as these guys do, so.
Okay, let's move, all those in favor of approving the intermunicipal agreement would say aye.
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 All opposed, nay? Motion carries. Now we can move on to survey, appointment of the board's zoning administrator. There's information in your packet, and if you read the last page, I think-
There is a resolution, I think, in there, a recommended motion.
The recommended motion, but also they're requesting that Gary remain as the acting administrative officer and he needs to be voted also. If you read, uh, 24 VSA 4448, appointment and powers of administrative officer, planning commission may nominate and the legislative body may appoint an acting administrative officer, which they're requesting in the administrative officer's absence. An acting administrator position is established or for municipal, blah, blah, blah. So we need to also include in that motion that Gary is the acting administrative officer. So someone wants to make.
What is the motion?
So the thing, the recommended motion is for Ryan. Right.
I'm after fast.
Right, and then the second piece of that is also include Gary as an acting.
So the motion is recommend, you want to read it and then just add here, just then as acting.
I'll go for it. The select board, I move that the select board appoint Ryan Gumbark as zoning administrator in term of three years and Gary Fox as acting administrative officer as per title, 24, chapter 17, section 4448A.
Okay, you have a second.
I second.
The main executive appoint Ryan Gumbark and Gary Fox is stated. Any discussion, questions? Hearing seen none? All those in favor would say aye.
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 All opposed, nay? Gary. Survey on the future of Rockingham Town Meeting and funding requests. Feeling funny?
A little bit.
A little bit. Do you, Ryan, brought us a comment?
Well.
Go for it.
All right. Bonnie and I have been working, as you know, and you heard earlier from Steve and Laurel, that a lot of people are, are interested in, in how we will preserve our, our town meeting. And this is a tradition that goes back to the founding of our town and it is a direct democracy, but with the following participation, citizen participation, we run into some difficult times in terms of people who are making the decisions. The tension is between active participation, as was described earlier, with folks talking, exchanging views, hearing other opinions, getting to know your fellow residents. And then other tension is that we only had, what, 100 people here last time?
120.
120 people making decisions for 3,200 registered voters. So Bonnie and I have decided that getting some information, a non-binding survey, which we go out to, that would be available online and on paper. And we would find out what kinds of things would make people more likely to attend and participate. And we're just gathering ideas here, getting, sort of testing the waters, taking the temperature of the town. It's a, it's a non-binding survey and it would be a, bring up, we hope the ideas that the little working group that was described earlier could digest and bring back to the select board. But without, without a survey, we're just guessing on, on what people, on what feelings might be and what the ideas might be. So therefore, we have talked about working with Survey Monkey and sending a postcard out to every registered voter, asking him or her to hop online or to go to town hall or the bookstore or where else we'll have the paper surveys.
Library.
Library.
And senior center.
And senior center. And people could fill those out or then we, one of us would input their information into the Survey Monkey and then we would have some information. And as you can see, the options, I don't know whether people who are here have seen this draft or not, the rest of you have.
That's the one that you sent me last week, right?
That's one.
That's the last most recent. Yeah, I was going to say, that's the one I think I put.
So the only change, uh, the, the first version of reference Australian ballot, and maybe some people don't know what that means, so I changed that. And, uh, a lot of towns are struggling with this issue. Several, several towns just recently decided to do away with in most of the town meetings. It kind of feels like that's where it's headed, but maybe not, you know? So one of the things I hope this survey will do is get people talking and thinking about it. That's, that's the main thing. There's nothing binding here. It's just some ideas. And the main thing is, is first two questions. And this is a agree, disagree. Knowing that town meetings are a worthwhile tradition that brings voters together in person to discuss and vote on important matters that affect the entire community. Town meetings ensure level of democracy and transparency in government. They should continue to be held in person. Or, y'all was a good point. With the technologies we enjoy in today's busy world, we no longer need to insist that every voter attend town meeting in person in order to cast their vote on important matters. The article or the warrant can be presented on the ballot and voted yes or no on election day. Both those positions are pretty strong ones, honestly. So it isn't up to the board to make that decision, ultimately, the voters are going to have to decide. So this effort is just to get people thinking and talking, get a sense of how they really feel. Eventually, there's going to come up again, a town meeting, and the people that vote on will be those that are there. So this is also to encourage people to attend that town meeting and cast their vote. So we're going to need about $2,000 to do that. And Rick and I are going to handle it. You know, I'm like, there you are. All the folks.
Scott, this is a usual money, money manager question. We, we got funds items somewhere we can.
We'll, we'll find some room. I know we have some administrative funds that we can probably dip into. I think the proposal, the Minuteman press, the quote that we have from, for the mailers is about a thousand. I think then we figured the mailing was, was another.
400 or so.
Yeah, so.
And then the Survey Monkey fee is a hundred bucks?
That's like 90 something, but you, you have to do three months.
Yeah, so I mean, we're, we're definitely, 2,000 is more than enough to cover, I think, what Rick and Bonnie are trying to do. So we'll find it, we'll make it work.
When do you plan to start the survey?
Soon as we get approval on money.
And you will present, my understanding, Bonnie, is that at town meeting, we will share the results of this survey, right?
Yeah, we want it November, December, January, you know, three months.
So then we can, in, in March, we would have maybe 15 minutes just to get the data out there with the graphs and so on that Survey Monkey will provide. And then the discussion can be better informed.
Yeah, I don't know if you want to call for this vote at this coming town meeting or not. That's, that's a whole different matter, but this is just, tonight, we're trying to get approval for the funding to pay Survey Monkey and I'll set it up with them. And then we want to get it on the town website and just, you know, Facebook, everywhere we can notify people that their surveys were learned.
And I mentioned we do press releases, of course.
Yeah, yeah, we already had an article in the Reformer last week, so.
So you're still going to leave the two questions about town meetings versus Australian ballot on there?
I think they're very important to start it off, you know, just to express these two different opinions, that's a basic debate. And then go on and talk about, um.
You have more specific ideas like.
Uh, why don't, why don't you come, you know, and would Saturday be better? So trying to keep it simple, it's just, you know, eight different questions. Don't take anybody anytime.
Well, so we're not going to have, we're not going to have the results of this before we have to learn the meeting, right?
Right.
So we won't be able to take this into account, whether we hold the meeting on, you know, Monday or move it to Saturday.
You can present the information, but yeah, if you're talking about other business, it'd be really, it's not binding, so moving under the business, we're going to have to it. But as I say, and it's even quoted in the article that Scott attached, that they had a 67% increase, but they don't tell you what year that was. Now, I went and got some numbers from Kathleen as far as the voting went. 2019, we had 71 people and 499 people voted. I was staring about, because that was the beginning of, if you remember, that was the beginning of COVID. Same thing with 20, we had 147 people that came to town meeting and 1,163 voted, but that was a primary year, so you got people voting on elections. Then we turned around and in the next year, 2021, 57 people showed up for the town meeting in person and only 528 voted. 2022 was 26, and this is when the railroad station vote went on, which was somewhat controversial, because there was a lot of people complaining, we ripped down the Y, ripped down Robinson Paper Company, and you got to save the railroad station. Well, we had 57, 26 people show up to town meeting and all 477 voted. 2023, last year, we had 105 at the town meeting and 392 voted. My, my opinion with, with Australian ballot is a lot of people vote uninformed. You can see tonight.
That's a problem.
There is nobody on Zoom watching, and I don't know how many watch Fat TV, to get the facts on the, in meetings, you know, but anyway. And then when you go to vote Australian ballot, it's done at town meeting, as you just mentioned, 20, 30 people show up and vote no, they don't want to just town meeting, well, you're right back to where you started from. So it's like the merger question, every five years it keeps coming up. It's a headache. So anyway, that's, that's my opinion.
It is a difficult situation, it really is. And I feel that just making this effort brings it more to the forefront of, in people's attention. I mean, voting Australian ballot, people don't even know what a lot of this is talking about, you know?
They don't know, they don't know the information, that's the problem.
They don't have the information.
Whereas if you get a town meeting, look at the conversation that took place, the conversation.
I know.
And Adam Wardle and Steve brought it up today, that town meeting is, is informational, but anyway.
So anyway, this is just a, this is an effort to shut the door, really.
Did you get any response? I know Amy sent a response about the lack of voter apathy.
Oh, well, everyone seems to say what you said, if you get a hot item on the agenda, people show up.
Yeah, right. That's what you told Scott, maybe we should put merger on it. Show a town investigate merger.
Yeah, maybe we should.
See how that would go. Non-binding now, monster, but.
I've seen that movie too many times before.
Yeah, well, there you go. That's the point, see, that's what people say, they've seen that one before, so. But anyway.
So anyway, I'm going to, I move then that we appropriate $2,000 to conduct the survey as described.
I'll second that.
All right. Motion made and seconded to oppose up to $2,000 for a survey on the future of Rockingham Town Meeting. And for the discussion, Owen? All those in favor would say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Aye, thank you, we'll be on it.
All right, let's go to municipal planning grant resolution for a shared cultural facilities plan.
This might look familiar to you because you passed this once before and it came back due to some formatting and updating, so Gary, is there anything else you wanted to add to this conversation about the cultural facilities grant?
Um, no, just it's a procedural requirement. The, we can do, we can be lead applicant on one application per year for the consortiums and then someone else has to be lead on the other application. And Brattleboro is the lead in the cultural plan application, we're the lead on the walk bike application. So the municipal authorizing official has to be the Brattleboro manager, et cetera, it's due there. So the resolution you have has the appropriate updated folks who will be in those positions.
Okay, recognized motion is there. Somebody want to read this verbiage?
All right. I'll do it. Move that we authorize as municipal authorizing official, John Potter, Brattleboro Town Manager, alternate AO Patrick Morley, Brattleboro Assistant Town Manager, Grant Administrator Susan Fillion, Brattleboro Planning Director. The FY24 Municipal Resolution for the Municipal Planning Grant jointly with the towns of Wellington and Brattleboro. With Brattleboro as the lead applicant for a $50,000 project and 10% match with Rockingham contributing, contributing up to $1,667 for an application to be submitted, and it was submitted November 1st, 2023.
Go here, a second.
Right here.
That was a quick trip.
Yeah, all the way from Boulder.
Okay. Did you hear the motion, too?
No, I didn't.
Okay. Right on, right. Thank you.
Okay, so I made the motion.
Yeah, you made the second.
Why was that called?
Laura just seconded. All right, any further discussion, questions? Hearing, uh, hearing done?
I think just to, just remind, you know, just for the public who doesn't know what this is about, this is an application for a Wyndham County Cultural Plan and we're going in with the communities of Wilmington and Brattleboro to apply for this grant.
Okay, everybody has a motion in mind? All those in favor would say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Motion carries. And you have a, I got one here.
Okay, you want to see that one? Okay.
Yeah, all right. Update on mixed-use development bridge street parking lot, this looks like a Gary Fox deal.
So this is, so this is a, an update to the area-wide plan information that I think we had presented to you previously. And one of the first phases of implementation that was recommended through that was the bridge street lot and the potential for that bridge street lot for redevelopment. There's a host of activities that have to go into that potential site. And so what this memo is trying to, this update the board about is that we're going to start that process. The town obviously is the owner, BFADC is involved, they think that there is a, they also have a, a lot close to that as well. And we're also going to be talking with the village about the potential of funding this portion of this updated program for the reuse with some ARPA funds to try to get this piece off the ground. It's a, it's a very complex project. In order to do this, we're talking about possibility of doing tax increment financing, new market tax credits, things that probably this board hasn't done in the past. And so we're going to have to bring in some folks who have done that kind of work. We had a conference call earlier this week with one of the groups that does that in Vermont, White and Burke. Gary's going to go to one of their one-day conferences tomorrow, which they have up in Burlington, as well as we spoke on the phone with the St. Albans City Manager, who has been very actively involved in, in a Tiff District and redevelopment project that mirrors this project as well and has had very positive results as, as working through that process. We've been able to attract not only the private, the public investment, but also private investment on top of that. So we've been able to repay the bonds that they were able to issue to the Tiff District plus attract additional private investment to really make some of their projects work. So Gary, is there anything else to this that you wanted to sort of bring up to the board?
Yeah, I know.
No, just that it's, um, it's, it's really, really important to work with folks that have connections with and have worked with Vermont private developers that can back a large project like this and have the experience. And, and so these folks do, White and Burke has worked with pretty much every, I think every single Tiff District and community in Vermont that has done them and just has an extensive network. And the developers know them. And so getting them in here. And the developers know them. And so getting them in here for Bellas Falls is really the, the biggest step. And this piece is really important to that.
Okay, there is no action needed this time, so.
Just an awareness, and we'll certainly keep you in the loop as this moves forward. Lot of potential activity on the island, as we've talked about, certainly with the train station improvements, with the bridge improvements. You know, in the scoping phase of trying to extend the historical room for our trail. So there's lots of, I think, activity that's been primed and ready to be hopefully moving and people will start to see real progress on. So I think these are all good, positive steps that'll potentially attract some of the private investment that we've been looking for and build our brand list and sort of diversify some of our tax base so that maybe, we talked about today, some of our challenges with some of our budget and some of the things we'd like to do, this would give us more opportunities to do some of those things and not have to go to the taxpayers at large, per se, which is just the homeowners' debts for these things all the time.
Any questions? If not, let's move on to the discussion of municipal ambulance service and EMS filling. A lot of information in your packet.
So Peter and I and Sean went to see Golden Cross. And we try to do that annually just to get caught up. And each time we have this meeting, I think we're a little bit concerned about where, not only our relationship is with Golden Cross, but where we're feeling stress in the entire EMS system in all of this area, right? And so in my little memo to you, I highlighted the fact that all of these regional ambulance services, whether it's Chester or the Brattleboro Fire EMS, which is now going to be their base model, or Rescue Inc., which we've talked to, which is also, you know, part of this regional model, even Cheshire, which is again Hampshire, but is also drawing from some of the talent that is in this area. All of these various ambulance companies are in competition for, for resources. And when, when the, when everything is limited like, like we've seen, what ends up happening is the cost for those folks have been increasing significantly. And the EMS training requirements are also not being diluted. They're actually a huge impediment to attracting new folks to building that pool. So we're really running into a real crisis point. This is getting worse now as we go forward because we obviously are in a rural situation here. So we're a large area. We have response time issues when we have multiple calls because they don't have the resources to staff two ambulances consistently. And so our neighbors have been picking up a large majority of our, our excess calls when they're out of service for a variety of reasons. They don't have a second unit available or they're out of service because they're doing the transport. What started to happen is other jurisdictions have started to request payment for those additional runs because that's stressing their resources, which they're paying for to their taxpayers. Springfield has, has an ordinance on the books, which is basically the same type of arrangement that you see with the issues with Walpole as well. And now we have started to actually receive bills for service from, from specific runs where they had to go and backfill and cover and did not get reimbursed and have then come to us to pay that bill in order to continue to support their service. So I wanted the board to be aware of it, just simply from the standpoint of you're gonna see these things on the bills and warrants. It's a challenge. When we met with the folks at Golden Cross to try to get a sense of, what's your strategic plan here? What are you trying to do? I'll speak for myself and then I'll let Peter maybe follow up. But I didn't get the sense that they were going to be able to accommodate any more activity for any period of time because every time they hire new staff, they get sucked into this sort of vortex as to somebody else will say, well, I'll give you a ten thousand dollar sign-on bonus if you come and work in my district. Or we'll give you extra time or whatever. I mean, there's all these recruiting incentives. So the people that they do get trained, they had trained five new people and I think, Peter, they told us they had lost four of them in, in the last two years. And not out of the service, not dropping out of EMS, but just simply being absorbed either into the new Brattleboro program, which is, which is ramping up, or into these other competitors, these other, they're not competitors, but these other local providers. So we're at a real dangerous inflection point as to how we're gonna go forward with this and, and figure out what's in our best interest, what's affordable. Because again, the cost of this service is increasing and it's going to start to become more and more apparent, as we talk about budget for next year, how this is gonna start to impact us. And it's a real challenge to our residents because they're not getting the quality of service that we would expect out of our contract. And I don't see any way strategically that they're gonna be able to provide that going forward. So it sounds kind of gloomy, but with that being said, that's why you're seeing some of these bills and you're continuing to see these because they don't have the resources to meet the call volumes.
So, we have a question that you want to say something?
Well, I just got a question. This, this standing here, we agreed to pay him a hundred and twenty thousand. That's not in addition to what we already pay him.
No, that was our one-year extension. If you remember, we worked and worked and worked to try to get something in writing because our older contract has expired.
Right, right.
And it had been sort of a verbal.
So basically it's a four thousand dollar monthly increase, between six thousand, seventy-two thousand, I forget.
Right. And so this agreement expires.
Went up a hundred and twenty, well, it was eight thousand dollars.
So if Golden Cross is getting a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year and other people are doing their work, what's Golden Cross's incentive to answer calls?
Well, Golden Cross doesn't just provide service to Rockingham. They provide service in other communities in New Hampshire. They're also somewhat involved in this Brattleboro transition. So we would hope, we had hoped to hear from their president, which is Dale Gerard, he's the president of their company, what their plan is to go forward and didn't get a good sense of what it really is. I think they're going year by year. So.
And the Rescue Inc., now that Brattleboro is doing its own EMS stuff, Rescue Inc. presumably will have more capacity.
They're better staffed at the moment. And the issue with Rescue Inc. is they're a per capita model. And when you look at the cost per capital, they're, they're looking at thirty-some-odd dollars a person is how they normally charge for their services.
Per resident of the town?
Per resident.
Thirty times fifty, two hundred?
Right.
Hundred and fifty, that, I don't know.
It sounds about right. Hundred and fifty, hundred and sixty, but that also, they need additional because this is really out of their normal service area. So how that would work, there'd have to be some other arrangements made in order to have that second ambulance available. So that, you know, when we do run into these problems, we're not running into all these additional issues with billing and all these additional problems.
Have you, have you spoken to Drew Hazelton?
Multiple times.
And what is the vibe here? Is he interested or?
I think, again, we had talked to him last year. We did this renewal and they weren't ready to make a decision at that point because they were still working on another, they were working at that point to help out Cheshire County in New Hampshire because they were transitioning. They're done with that apparently at the moment. So they might have some capacity now. We talk about that. And we'll talk about it later in the budget as to how we want to go forward for the next cycle. In speaking to Golden Cross, they said that they were not going to be seeking a large increase, but they were looking at a little, four, five percent.
Three to four percent increase.
So that level of service, he could not, he could not guarantee us that they would be able to meet the contractual level of service. He was pretty adamant that they would not be able to meet that.
So Walpole, this is a three thousand dollar bill from Walpole and there more. If we add that to what we're paying Golden Cross, and if Drew Hazelton and Rescue Inc. could actually provide solid service, we wouldn't have to be begging neighboring towns to do it?
As these bills start to accrue, I think that cost, that, that, that difference is going to balance itself out as we go forward. But again, it's a regional crisis. It's not just us. I mean, I'm on this EMS committee that's listening there, doing some recommendations to the state. So it's folks from all over Vermont. The only place that really doesn't have an EMS problem is Chittenden County for a variety of reasons, right? They have a lot of fire-based EMS. Obviously, the UVA Medical Center is close, so their runtimes are very short. Everybody else who has situations like ours, where you have a rural area, people are dispersed and when you do get a call, there's a long time out of service while you're, while you're handling that call. That's a problem. And it's a problem all over the state.
Scott, at some point in the past, I feel like you had mentioned that Rescue Inc. felt like it would make more sense for them if they had other neighboring towns that were using their service or something?
It would help them, yes, if they were more geographic participants. So one of the things that we talked about is, you know, we're, we're sort of in an overlap area, right? Between Chester EMS, Springfield EMS, Walpole EMS. And if we do change, is there a way to make it beneficial so that we can all make it work, all of us, and not have these ancillary bills that keep coming in and making it, you know, a challenge? And try to figure this out financially. So those conversations would have to, have to take place and some sort of an arrangement would have to be made so that they can backfill and be available so that if there is that second call, one of those resources can go out and help out.
I imagine you've had a lot of conversations with surrounding towns about their, their EMS services.
We have. We also had a meeting, just in our regional meeting in Chester not too long ago to talk about this. And so most of the folks were there. And, you know, we're talking about this as what options might be available going forward. I think there's a couple of things the state's gonna have to step in and view. I think there are ways that they can increase the reimbursement rates. There are various other charges that can be added on to some of these bills to help underwrite some of these services because right now, the EMS model, they don't make enough, based on the reimbursement rates, to pay for their overhead. By the time you pay for the training, the staffing and the cost of ambulances, which has doubled, by the way. It used to be about a hundred and fifty thousand outfit and ambulance. It's now three hundred thousand plus. It's just the model doesn't work. It doesn't work financially. It doesn't work operationally. And Vermont is broken into EMS districts. And EMS districts have traditionally been more to help with the physician side. So they'll give EMS physicians who have talked to them about protocols for various types of responses. And not necessarily as much about the operational issues, about, you know, do we have enough manpower? Do we have enough dispersion of, of, you know, the types of assets that are available? Where are the calls coming from? None of that kind of information is being evaluated, at least on a continual basis. So there are ways that you can do that, but again, that requires the state to step up, designate EMS as an essential service, which right now is not considered as such. So it surprises a lot of people, but it is not. Under the state of Vermont, they don't recognize EMS as an essential service. And then that opens up opportunities for more funding and various types of additional support. If the state doesn't take some action along those lines, a lot of these problems are only gonna grow and get worse.
Would it be worthwhile to invite our legislators, our local legislators here to talk with us?
They were, one of them was at the meeting in October. There'll be a full report that goes to the legislature in December. But I think it'll be, it'll be valuable to really try and, and, you know, everybody has an agenda, right? And it's always tough to try to get attention. But I think this one, when you talk to people about it, they're very surprised about how fragile the EMS system is. They just figure all you do is dial nine-one-one and somebody comes. And what's happening is you dial nine-one-one and somebody's not coming and then they have to call a second ambulance and they might not be coming, and now you're calling for a third. Well, that fifteen minutes that you're waiting to get that call dispatched is critical for any of the types of responses, of medical responses that might be necessary. So it's a real concern.
Question here. A lot of the addresses on these Walpole invoices are people from Connecticut and Massachusetts. Is that where their insurance is located? I mean, I see people, there's someone in Bloomfield, Connecticut. There's someone in Millbury, Massachusetts. What does that have to do with Bellas Falls and Rockingham?
Well, these folks were here because the, the calls for service is, is where the, you know, they, where they went out to assist people, so.
You hear someone from Millbury, Massachusetts?
Right.
And another one from Bloomington, Connecticut. And I just wonder what, what the?
Really have second homes.
Who are the people?
You know?
Right. Well, one of them was on I-91, so they were just driving, right? So, I mean, that could be any random person who's just passing through.
Oh, we're responsible for that?
Unfortunately, it comes right through.
They leave the road. I mean, that'd be nice, not.
The state's not gonna help us.
Well, it's a, I think it's a.
That's why the fire department's now charged for, you know, non-responds of accident on the interstate or something because, you know, that's why they get some funding and the insurance, they are now billing the person involved to pay, get their insurance to pay for the time that they, I mean, they could spend, they have the hazards and materials, but they could be up there for a day and a half, two days, take care of this mess. I mean, and so.
Yeah, it's a real.
Somebody's gonna pay for it, you know? But the, the taxpayer, we're gonna pay for it.
So private pay here, a lot of these are listed as, or like other Medicaid private pay. We, what they're billing us for is what hasn't been covered by Medicare and Medicaid?
Right.
It's scary when you start looking at it.
Yeah. Just saying, that might be a great topic to bring people to town meeting.
Yeah.
The essential EMS. It'd be a great topic. That would get a lot here.
Yes, unfortunately, there's not a lot of good answers.
You didn't think, oh, Scott and Sean and I were discussing was that there, forty percent of the calls are non-transport. You go up there for a cut finger or something. They don't want to ride in ambulance, but the guy, they show up because somebody dialed nine-one-one.
Right.
So they're, they're incurring that cost to make a run out there. And if the guy says, you know, it's like Scott Carroll last, when he got his finger caught in the treadmill.
Yep.
And they called and Saxon drew a rescue, finally showed up. But that, in the meantime, they toned Golden Cross, they were on their way and there was no way that Scott asked them, can you turn them around so they don't have to come all the way out here? And I have, you know, and they said, no, they're already on their way, so.
They're going six hundred bucks.
No, actually not because they didn't transport them. They, Scott.
But it was out of service, so if there had been another call, they would not have been able to respond.
Right. Because they were committed. That's the situation you're facing as well.
So the dispatch system.
Calls are that way, you know, it just makes you start to wonder if you're, are you better off maybe buying a small ambulance that, you know, the EMT can grab and run out and, I mean, there must be enough EMTs around. If we get a van-style vehicle with.
I know where there's an ambulance.
There's the basics in it, you know, to take care of the cuts and the bruises or whatever. And because they aren't gonna be able to transport, but I mean, that's, as Scott just said, then what's the cost of a vehicle compared to what, you know?
Yeah, but how do you know? Well, what's needed until you get there?
That's the liability and that's why they come. Because they, they have to show up. If you, if you refuse transport, you actually have to sign and say, I refuse. So if you drop over six minutes after they leave from some other problem, they're not liable because you, you had this, you had given, you know.
Well, I got hit by a car in a oversized parking lot. And I didn't, I didn't want to go in ambulance, and I didn't. And somebody said, oh, they've already called them. But I never heard anything else about it. I didn't sign anything.
Right.
I never saw them either.
Once, once they get the call, they have to respond whether they're, because as Scott just said, it's a liability. You, somebody called them, so they have to respond. Because if they don't, they say, well, nobody showed up, you know? So that's the situation these guys are facing. So it's kind of a crazy situation.
There will be more about this as we go forward and certainly there'll have to be some conversations about what do we want to do for next year and how do we want to approach it? And unfortunately, there's not a lot of great, there are options, but all, all the options have some issues.
Sure.
Okay. Number eleven, municipal manager employment agreement amendment. We, this is a. We, this is a few things we discussed in the executive session a couple meetings ago and it is now at the point to, we all agreed to it, so it's a matter of getting it signed. Do you have the original or is Paul signed one yet?
No.
Okay, so we need a motion to approve the municipal manager employment agreement amendment and what it is is effective November 21st, 2023, Scott will accrue 25 days of vacation instead of the 20 he's getting now. And effective November 1st, 2023, employees shall compensate him, employers shall compensate the employee in the amount of 175 per pay period, that's every two weeks for auto expenses. He gets 175 now for all four weeks. So, and we don't have managed vehicles, so he has to use his own, so it's things like gasoline and stuff. December, and this is a personal thing for Scott to decide on his own, but we need to Scott, a town approval to allow him to do it and that's December 31st. Scott can move from municipal manager employees to Beamer's. He can go to group reemployment with Beamer's group C enrollment that says pension. So that being said, we'll take a motion to approve the agreement.
Why would we approve the employment agreement as described in this document?
I'll second that.
And authorize a chair to sign.
And authorize a chair to sign.
Thank you, Ann. Any discussion, questions? Hearing none? All those in favor would say aye.
Aye.
All those both, nay? Wouldn't care, I will sign in my pocket. Okay, I can turn that to Scott. All right, number 12, financials. Whee, did everybody have fun looking at those today? What a name, great thing that I saw anywhere. There's a couple of numbers that are a little loud and I'll let you a little bit though. I've been over with Scott and Melissa, so I don't have any issues or questions.
Yeah. I have just had one. Under theater income.
What category you're on, Bonnie?
Uh, three.
Really? Okay.
It says advertisements, zero. So no ads?
No, he does. I think, I think it sends, and one of the lines above cinema income is in that screen advertising.
Right.
So how come it's not here?
Well, if they haven't received or sent the town fund, then it's not going to let this come in. This is, you're looking at the budget, so you're looking at what we estimate it's going to, we're going to get and if they haven't submitted even, they just haven't done it yet. Or they may not be having any advertisements going out for us. I mean, the attendance over is the same thing. If you look at that, we're looking for.
Most of Bonnie's is on screen. He doesn't really do much other, you know, it's very unusual for him to do any other types of it, so.
Okay, that's actually awesome.
Okay, if you want to look at page four of 15, under the town manager, you see a new heading there that says community funding. This is a category that I had their change item heading to because they're used to be season reimbursements. So we're community funding. These are organizations that don't provide social services to people that apply, such as health, mental health, stuff, things of that nature. So we set up this, like the Memorial Day celebration, Old Home Days in Greena, Vermont. Those don't provide social services, so there's going to be, if MSA is approved, they will be in that category and the bike, there'll be a bike project will be moved over there because they don't really provide. That's all depending on how many goes to the budget and that review committee, so we should be having that, so that's about all I have in there. Just want to make you aware of it so if you see something a little different. And then Scott and I talked about, if you look on page two to four under the highway fund, you notice the pavement maintenance is a little short, what we spent, what we projected, but that's going to be dumped into the sidewalks, so.
Money be saved on the pavement.
Yeah, yeah.
They've been carrying that over.
Yeah, we're carrying it over, so I'm not going to try to, you know.
I think it's going to come in a little bit under budget anyway, but be that as a matter, you'll see a number there.
So, and the other question I asked was the maintenance of the waypoint and we had some work down there that had to be replaced that we weren't planning on, so that's why you'll see the 10,000 almost shot at 8,400, $8,500, so.
I got a bad water heater that I got to fix too, so that's going to get a little more out of alignment.
Now, if you look on page 10 of 11, you'll see town hall roof is 137, 335 dollars it's spent. And there are some aqua funds that were applied to that and there are some grant funding that's there and Scott, we're planning on doing another MRR.
Right, so they're coming in December to do our onsite and then once we're fully qualified, which I'm guessing will be, we'll then be eligible for the full $500,000, which will then do the new membrane.
Because it's still leaking pretty badly.
Really? After all that money?
It's just, we're just chasing the leak. If you notice, it's moved down the hall, so it's now leaking into the property.
Follows a beam and then we still, lowest point drops.
Yeah, right. So the roof is just failing.
It's, yeah, it's crazy. That's where I live at.
Scott, you already mentioned this overrun on roofing. Was that in a previous project or was, you mentioned like one of the big things that hit us this year was?
Well, we had authorized that. If you remember, we did two different projects. We did the lighting project and then we also did that roofing support and we got some funding from the village for that, but we also spent some money. We had not budgeted that as well in our original budget, so.
Hey, anybody else got any questions? Nope, hearing none? Okay, review and approve order of bills and warrants, take a motion please.
Why would we approve order of bills and warrants?
Wait here a second.
I'll second.
Motion made in second to review and approve order of bills and warrants. All those in favor would say aye.
Aye.
All those both, nay? Coming around for signatures. While that's going on, let's talk about review agenda items for November 21 meeting. I know we're going to have some budget discussion.
Right, so I put in a budget calendar in your budget packet. So right now, for the 21st, we have scheduled the library, the social services levy committee, which has been meeting and going over, we're at the five-year renewal period, so we have to renew all of those in this next town meeting and they'll have a recommendation as well as a report to the board.
I got a question about that. Last year we got $1,000 for the historical society for the park.
Right.
But no one has contacted us about this year, that that committee, the levy committee.
I think we put that in as a...
It's in the park, if you look under the park.
We didn't put that under social services, Bonnie. We put it in the regular general fund budget.
Oh, okay.
It's part of park maintenance.
Yeah, it's a park-supported expenses, how we...
So is that worth, going to stay there?
Yeah, I think that's where we're going to put it in for, right.
Okay, all right, good. Thank you.
Yep. We'll have a cemetery commission appointment as we talked about tonight and we'll have one additional person for that. And I'm sure there'll be more to follow, but that's the basic.
Let's see, let's go down to review agenda items for November 28, tribe board meeting. Can we address that?
So we're going to talk about the five, let's put this out, the fire feasibility.
I need to relax, Scott.
That's a tongue twister. I know, that's not good. Fire feasibility study, the progress on that. We'll also talk a little bit, the Saxon's River folks want to talk about paving. Not sure that we want to do it at the tribe board, I got to think about that because we really haven't gotten the pavement management report yet to the town board, so I suppose we could talk about it, but until the town board gets the pavement management report, I'm not too sure how useful the conversation would be at that point. And I'm not sure we'll have that report by that meeting because we were planning on sharing that with the board at the December 5th meeting, so I don't know if it'll be completed by then or not, so.
It would make more sense for them to come to the December 5th meeting.
I think it would make much more sense to have it there as well.
Okay, any other questions on that? Nope, let's go down to other business.
I know, I'll say, thank you.
Great. Just mentioned that lovely taxes are due November 13th, next Monday, in case anybody has forgotten. And that's all I have. Bonnie, you have any?
Lighter?
No, good.
All right, we don't need an executive session, is that right?
No, just one other item under other business and I'll let Sue update as well since she lives out there, but we did finally get a permit from A and R. We've been out there a couple of different occasions and with the railroad. And so some of the material that was deposited by the July storm at the railroad, it sort of re, they sort of created a, like a mound with some of this material. And A and R gave us permission to go ahead and remove it and then we have a contractor onsite this week. We're only going to do five days' worth of removal. We talked to the resident who lives there, the carrier, so they're aware and they were made aware of what we were doing. So we'll have, that gravel is being brought back to our pit and then we'll use that, it's mostly rock and other material there, and then we'll crush that next year for gravel. So there's an ongoing operation, at least through this week there.
Do we have an estimate of what kind of yardage they can get out of there?
Well, it looks, I'm not sure what he's hauling per day, Elijah, but I think we'll crush it at least as much as we made this year with the basements contract, which was a pretty decent amount of material. I think we got, what, 15,000 cubic yards roughly? So, and it looks like good material and it'll ultimately help with the flood control in that area around the Barnesville Bridge because it'll allow the flood plain to naturally receive additional waters. Right now, it's sort of creating this artificial barrier, so it's going to force the water up more rapidly in that location. It was, it was potentially going to threaten some of those bridge abutments in that bridge. So I think it's a good project all around and we're going to submit it to FEMA to see if it's reimbursable under FEMA since it is debris from the July storm and we'll see if they're eligible. If that's the case, then that's even better, so.
Yeah, very happy to hear what you thought of it.
Yeah, so thank you, Elijah, for your idea. Took a little bit of work, but we got it to the point now where I think it's going to be a good solution for everyone, so.
So there is no need for an executive session then?
All good.
All right, that being said, take motion to adjourn.
Take it.
Second.
All those in favor would say aye.
Aye.
We are out of here.
This meeting was recorded by Falls Area Community Television located at One Hospital Court, Bellows Falls, Vermont. If you would like a copy of the meeting, our phone number is 802-463-1613, or email us at fact810@gmail.com. Falls Area Community TV, keeping government honest.